Lone Star Pond and Bargain Center, 6509 I-30 on the Frontage Road in Greenville. Your one-stop shop for TVs, electronics, computers, and gaming systems. Lone Star Pond offers a giant selection of hunting, fishing, outdoor gear, and firearms. They're the best prices on diamonds, gold, and jewelry. We've got everything from lawn and garden equipment to job site tools and musical instruments. So for the best deals and pawn rates in town, come see us on the south side of the Frontage Road in Greenville.
All right, it's five o'clock, and I'll call the work session to order. And first items to be discussed will be the 2017-2018 budget. That's it?
Yes, Mayor and City Council. Tonight and next meeting are very two important meetings concerning our budget. Tonight on our regular agendas, items 7A and 7D are two public hearings associated with fiscal 2017-2018 budget as part of our budget calendar. And the next meeting, September 26th, is when the budget is supposed to be adopted by the City Council. Having said that, Summer and I are here tonight again to answer any question about the budget you might have in general or particular. And again, as I said before, the budget is a very complicated document. The one that we have, and Summer and I work, is actually 297 pages. The one you have is a little bit shorter, I believe it's 90 pages.
What, 93?
93, I'm sorry.
So you're holding out on it?
Right. No, we, uh, we, uh, transparency is our number one priority.
I was joking. I was joking. You're not.
And, uh, and, and, and again, uh, we are here to answer any question, to hear any comments from the council regarding the budget. And we can, again, if you are interested, we can put our fact sheet, which is two pages that we summarize basically our budget. And I have said that to some council member, and I say it again here, on the fact sheet, you can see that we are spending $2.5 million plus $1.8 million on our student improvement program embedded. That's a total of $4.3 million cash at your disposal above and beyond our standard operation and maintenance budget. And again, I started this fact sheet because we want to, four years ago, and we want to be as transparent to you as, as we can and tell you what is happening above and beyond the budget, which we call an O&M, operation and maintenance, that basically the existing operation is. And again, we are here to answer any questions, hear any comments, and, uh, and with that, we are, uh, beginning.
Jerry, you want to?
Well, I have some questions. Of course, I missed the last meeting, so maybe somebody may have to catch me up here. But one of the issues, one of the things I wanted to talk about, 3% pay increase since it would be effective the first of the next year. And I guess that's, that's a cost of living raise, which I really feel that we should consider instead of, instead of a straight cough, a straight cross line, cost of living increase, a merit increase for employees. I think that is a huge, if you do merit increases, it's a nice motivator for productivity and everything else, and I'd like to consider that. As I understand, you said that we have to have three people on the council that would agree to bring that up as a line item, or how, how, how would you catch me up on that?
Well, I think, I think for protocol and operational standpoint, if, if the council want to make any changes, either addition or deletion to the budget, I think that needs to be either one item or two items or 10 items as a line item. We need to place that on the next council meeting and vote whether or not you want to add or delete or change any part of the budget.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we change the amount, which is roughly $275,000. I'm just suggesting we change the procedure for how we allocate those funds.
If that's the pleasure of the council to, let me say, before we even go any further, the $273,000 include police and fire. Police and fire are exempt from the process of merit. So what we need to do, if the City Council decide to not go across the board and go by merit raises, so someone gets 3%, someone gets 0%, someone gets 1%, the amount is not going to be 273 anymore. So we need to get the 3% for our fire department and 3% for our police department out of the 273, and then whatever is left to do merit increase as opposed to across-the-board increase.
I would think that it wouldn't change, because if you, if the place in the fire department, if that's set in a way, that still takes the 3% for those two departments.
That's correct.
3% for the other departments, and you, you just allocate this to the department heads, your total amount stays the same, but you could tell a department head after they get your approval that somebody may get 0%, somebody may get 5%, somebody may get 3%, as long as they don't exceed that 3% for their budget. And I think that would.
Theoretically, you are close, you are correct, but factually, in, in an accounting procedure, you assume that like one firefighter gets 0, the other firefighter gets 4%.
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is even if this was across the board.
Right.
However it's distributed in the fire department and the police department, we're not talking about a change there. I think what he's talking about is a change for the rest of the city employees, too.
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm saying, since we have to give all the firefighters and all the police 3%, so you have less money to work with in merit process. That's what I'm saying. But in a scheme of things, if we had about 400 employees, including the police and fire, then the merit process was more useful or more active. But right now, we have to allocate the 110 or 120.
Just to keep, just to keep it simple, suppose the, suppose the 3% was $200,000. The 100,000 of that was for cost of living increases for full of first public safety. Okay. Then the other 100,000 could be allocated on a merit increase. Doesn't mean we increase that. It means that we just allocate it on a, whatever, a 135 or a 357 or whatever is determined, but that it be a merit, that must be merit increases and not just strike.
You're correct. Yes, we can do that. I was trying to just make a point that because of the technicality of police and fire, there are technically, theoretically, it's going to be less money available as you have the whole 273 in a pool. That's, that was my point. But everybody's correct what they are saying.
And what I would recommend as part of that procedure, and you probably already have this in your, your bank anyway, is if we went to a merit-type increase for that other 100,000 that Jerry was, was using as an example, if Summer said, okay, my people, this person's going to get 2%, that person's going to get 4%, before she would identify that to them, she would have to clear that with you, because you would be the one that says, you have used all your money, or you've did however you deem and you agree, because that all basically works for you. But before they tell, tell the person, hey, I'm going to give you 4%, the control, that would be through you.
No, we, if, if the City Council decide to do that on 26 by vote going to that, then we know the formula, we know the process, we're going to work on that quickly, we have a process in place, we have a formula in place, and we've done that before, and, and we take care of that. All we need is a, a vote from you to go from what we have in our budget across the board or to a merit basis compensation.
Okay. So I don't know what we have to do as council to decide if we want to do that or not, but I'm.
Is that something we need to vote on in the next meeting? So we need to put that on as an agenda item?
Yeah, we can put an agenda item for you, line item into the budget as a, as a, and you all can vote on that.
Okay. I have another issue.
Let me, uh, let me, Mayor, are you, you certainly have the right to do that. Are you exercising your authority to do that?
I just want to make sure procedure-wise, so we have to put something on the agenda tonight in order to amend the budget next week, or?
Well, we don't throw the budget until next week. The public can talk about it, and if we get inputs, we still have a week. But if we're going to make a change that says, this is the way that's supposed to be done, we should try and get all the discussions done tonight, so that next week, when we get to the budget, we take into account any public input, as well as any changes that the council wants, and then next week, we should be able to say, yay, barely, everything that's we talked about.
Yeah. I, I certainly, okay, trying to get it ahead of time, but does that mean next week that someone can't bring up something new that, I mean, you may not have a good chance to pass it if people haven't had a chance to think about it.
No. I think you are correct. If you want, if you have any idea to make changes to the budget, now Mayor has the right to put it, or three council members have the right to put it on the agenda as a line item for the next meeting.
But the budget is on the agenda, so we can talk about the budget next meeting and go to face it. I mean, I'm going to bring up everything I know of tonight, but I can't promise I'm not going to think of something.
No, you can, you can next week, next week. It's not cash and country. Ideally, any changes that we wanted to get changed, anything the public brought forward that we wanted to incorporate, we would discuss tonight.
Okay.
But a final change, final vote will be next meeting.
All right.
Okay, let me see if I can make this quickly, quickly. Um, I am concerned about the fact that employee benefits do not scale with length of service. For example, an employee that's been here a year gets three weeks, an employee that's been here 25 years gets three weeks of vacation. And I personally think it's custom in the industry, and it should, we should be honoring that service by increasing an under-vacation days or weeks as based on employee service. So I would like to suggest that, I mean, I don't know if the breaks are right, but we do three weeks, employees be eligible for three weeks the first 10 years, or five years, or whatever the council decides, that subsequently they'd be eligible for four weeks. Under my notes here is 10 to 20 years, and then so after that, after five weeks, 20, 20-plus years, five weeks of vacation. I think that, and I, I think probably we need to price that and see what it is ordinarily if it weren't for overtime. There really doesn't cost when an employee takes off vacation because you're paying them, employee anyway, but the fact that we do have a lot of overtime in our public safety area, because if a police officer's off, he has to be replaced, and I think we need to try to allocate some additional cost to that. But I would like to see that, that we honor that, or honor those employees with that. The other thing we have.
Can I make a comment on that?
Go ahead.
Can I make a comment? I mean, that's a noble idea and a good idea, but every change is, is associated with money. If you change, let's say, from five, three weeks to five weeks, it's going to cost money. It's going to cost to your budget. Nothing is free.
No.
How, how is going to, how is going to cost money is the, the person that is going to take one extra week of vacation, if that's your proposal, somebody has to cover that position, and that somebody is going to cost overtime, and, and I just.
Well, it doesn't always cost overtime.
Well, 99% of the time costs overtime.
For a position, a county position, for example, would cost overtime, or would take next quarter?
For, for example, if you have, I, I mentioned that, not anything against police department, but the amount of, I was working on the budget this weekend, the amount of overtime in our police department is $297,000, which is part of doing business. I'm not criticizing for it or against it. So if you change, let's say, from three weeks to five weeks, I can guarantee you that 297 down the road is going to be 350 or 400,000. It's not like you adding vacation and it's, it's just because the person that is going to go on vacation, somebody has to cover his shift, and you got sick leave, you have back injury, you have shoulder injury, you have this, that, so all, uh.
Well, I didn't say increase sick time.
No, no.
This is not PPO. We don't bunch PPO, we don't bunch medical and vacation together, City.
Well, it's not police department. For example, in public works department, if we have a construction inspector and he takes an additional one week of vacation, somebody has to cover that to make sure the contractor is following his job.
I get your, I get your point. I'd still like to, I'd still like to consider, if you wouldn't mind, those breaks and provide some pricing for us, so we can make a decision about that. I really believe myself that employees are, are most valuable and really only asset in the city, and I think that we ought to consider something like that.
No question about that.
Yeah, okay. In regard to that, I have one more suggestion, if you mind, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Regarding these longevity bonuses that we apparently are paid, I guess it's not appropriate to call them Christmas bonuses anymore, but anyway, longevity bonuses that we pay in November of every year. The current policy is to pay $6 a month, is $6 for each month of service with a cap of 25 years. First of all, I think we should forget the cap for all of these, but then again, I think it should be, it should scale. It should be $6 for the first 10 years, maybe $8 for the next 10, and then $10 for everything thereafter. And I'd like to price that, I'd like to get a price for that also. I know I talked to you about that last year, and you told me you didn't do it because it's too expensive.
Actually, I believe we gave you a number on that.
Okay, well, could we get a number on that again? And then finally, I'll stop now, is I think our awards for employee of quarter, Departmental Employee of the Year and the overall employee of the year need to be raised myself in recognition of the service in favor of our city. And I have some suggestions about that. I think employee of the quarter is currently $50. I think we should raise it to at least 100. Department Employee of the Year is, is 250. I think we should be 500. And overall employee of the year, I think should be 1,000. So I'd like to determine the cost impact of that also. Thank you.
James, you got anything?
Yes, I do. Last time we started this discussion, and the more I thought, I'd like to get in-depth, and we've got the perfect executive, this item B, under 13. I'm very proud of the new businesses that we've got coming, for sure, the perspectives that we've got coming. If we go to executive session, and I wish to be open, but since we're talking about these codename projects that we cannot discuss openly, when we get in the bag tonight on the executive session, I would like to ask Mr. Ibrahim to update us on any cost for this budget, because this budget's going to be tight like they always are. I'd like to know any added expenses that we might anticipate for sewer, for water. I know we've got one or two projects we've completed in town that water pressure, for example, Academy was a question, water pressure out there, and they ended up completing the reservoir water, whatever they're set for their own building. I'd like to know about water pressure, sewer, any pilot agreements, anything else that we've got out there that would apply to any of these special projects that we're lucky to have coming to town, and be sure we have those items in the budget, and don't get surprised mid-year or during the year as these things are finalized. So if we can discuss that tonight, it'd be a great question.
Okay. I don't know that he's got the information planned for tonight, but we'll see what we can do. Anything else?
No.
Got it? Yeah.
I appreciate Mr. Evans, because I had the same question about, since we eliminated impact fees, do we have sufficient funding to take care of all the fabulous businesses that are coming? I think that is a very worthwhile question, and I would echo and ditto the same, same question. And I appreciate Councilmember Ranson, Dr. Ranson. I think our employees are most thankful for our support of your proposals. I hope we get more.
Are we putting anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Brendan?
I'm, I'm with Dr. Ranson 100% on that. I'd like to add longevity bonuses online as well, what the numbers are, but I think that longer people are here, the more valuable they are to us, and we need to make sure that, that our base structure reflects that. I have a question about, and forgive me, I wasn't here last week either, and I meant to watch the video, and I haven't, so just may have already been covered, but the service center, $400,000, when you introduced that a couple of meetings ago, you said that it would be, they're utilizing a space that's not really good, this is a downsized but more efficient, efficient use of space. And, and all I can think of is, I know, seems like, you know, we, we've looked at replacing fire station number one for about 20 years, and we looked at replacing the animal shelter for about at least 10 years before we did it. And this is the first I've heard about this, and I wondered if this is not something that we could phase in, save some money in this year's budget, and do this down the road somewhere?
You sure can, certainly you can, if that's the pleasure of the council, but again, we have water distribution, sewer collection, street traffic, and flea using this facility, plus our, we have a traffic department that we make our own traffic sign, like stop sign and yield sign and street sign. And it's been, internally, we've been talking about it for a long time, but you are right. We, we, since we are going to the pay-as-you-go policy, we felt we have enough revenue to do that, and it's going to be smaller, it's going to be very efficient, but the answer, like you suggested, yes, can, can be, can be pushed down the road. But the only advantage I see, we are not going to borrow money, you're not going to borrow $400,000 to pay a million dollar for it, maybe in the future or sometime, you are just paying for the actual cost. But you are right, we can not do it and go on and deliver the services and see what happens.
And I really, I mean, maybe, maybe I need to come out there and look at it sometime this week, I'll try to get what you on a schedule, see kind of what we're doing. But to me, you know, that's probably nearly two and a half cents on our, on our tax rate for a building. I didn't know we needed it until I saw the sheet a few weeks ago. And what I do feel like we need, that I've had several people bring up to me in the past just a week or so, is traffic police. I, I think they could pay for themselves just sitting on the corner of Molten Park and writing truck tickets. It, it, we have a lot more traffic in this town, we have wrecks in this town, and, and I feel like we could improve the quality of life for our citizens and the safety by doing that, and not just that, not just the traffic itself, but our, the officers that we have have to pull off of other important things to handle those. I mean, I saw a wreck, you know, yesterday, we've got three police officers there. That means there's maybe only one or two patrolling the streets of the, of the, of the city while that's going on. I witnessed it down the street, a domestic disturbance the other day, and four police officers show up and address that real quick. Well, you know, there's just not, when something urgent happens and they're in the urgency business, there's just not, the rest, there's not enough personnel to go around and do the rest of it. And I, I would like to look at that, and maybe we, we add one or, one or two people to the traffic division and, and evaluate it, audit it next year, and see how much it's cost us, and if, if it's costing too much, then through attrition, we get rid of that division, and we put those people in spots where people have retired and, and phase it out. But the, the people that I've talked to when I, you know, about the budget, the citizens out there feel like we, you know, they don't patrol my neighborhood enough, or there's, you know, I wish they'd catch this speeder, this stop sign, that kind of stuff. And I think we could address that with the traffic division at less than what we could save on spreading that service center out over the, over the course. And then I also, I brought this up the last time, but I know we don't know the final numbers on health insurance yet, but I would like to talk about how we're going to address that, because those costs, the cost structure difference is going to hit our employees. And, and a lot of employees are mad at me, frankly, and for, for basically giving them a pay cut, and I've defended it, because I think it was the right thing to do, and I, and I think we made a sound financial decision to kind of get those benefits in line. But it's a pay cut to them, even with the 3% across the board or whatever we do there, some of those employees are still taking that, a hit. And so I'd like to look at whether it's a one-time bonus structure or something from that health insurance savings, so that they don't get pounded with that all in a year. They look around and see, new things going up, the city has more money than we've ever had, and they're having to take a cut to do the same amount of work. So I, I feel like we really need to, to look at that.
Can I make a comment on that? On, I do agree with you on the health, health insurance issue. On, I do agree with you on the health, health insurance issue. And the major, major reason that I put 3% increase into our budget, I want to say 80% of it is because of the health insurance. Otherwise, we would have not looked at 3% increase pay across the board. Maybe not anything at all, or maybe less than that. But the reason for 3% was fundamentally because of that, to lessen the cost of the health insurance. But, but again, if the council want to make a line item to do anything different, again, that's your prerogative and your authority. On, regarding the traffic police, I do not agree with this notion that government pay for itself. Never government pay for itself. It's just a myth down there to, nothing against the police or any other department, but everything is thought that something is going to pay for itself. But in government, nothing is going to pay for itself. And last meeting, I made an example of our golf course situation. 20 years ago, somebody stood here and told the city council, let us sell bond and improve the golf course, and it's going to pay for itself. So the city sold the 20 years bond and the spending on the golf course. And then we saw we are losing money. And then the person came back and they asked him, what's happening? How come it's not paying for itself? We are losing 40,000, 100,000. He said, well, last year was too cold, the year before that was too wet, the year before that was too windy, that's the reason we are not making it. And somebody asked him, how come we didn't say that when you said it's going to pay for itself? Again, nothing in government is going to pay for itself, period. Because once we do audit, then the argument is going to come and say, well, because of A, B, C, D, it's not paying for itself. And then the other point that you mentioned, once you create a program in government, you cannot get rid of, period. And just to give you an example, President Carter told the American people, let's create Department of Energy and Department of Education. If it doesn't work, we undo that. Well, 50 years later, Department of Energy is there, Department of Education is there. Everybody admits they are worthless, costing the taxpayer billions of dollars, but nobody can tell 250,000 family, 104 member, million here and million there, you're going to be out of job. So, once we create that, if it doesn't work or it doesn't pay for itself, you cannot get rid of the police officer, you cannot say, go home. So you find a way within the system, and then it's going to be added cost. That's my comment.
I, I agree with you when it comes to Washington federal program or Austin federal programs. But we've had, we've had traffic divisions and not traffic divisions, and traffic divisions and not traffic divisions.
No.
And I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about, you know, putting something permanent in place. I'm saying, if we, if we had, let's just say, if we had two officers, and two officers, let's say, cost $100,000 to operate next year.
Each, each.
Okay, I, I guess, yeah, if you, if you're buying a new truck and a pistol and a bullet and stuff. So, okay, 100,000 each, and, and you get into it and they only, you know, they bring back revenue that's only half of that. You can look at it and say, okay, well, then next year, you're not going to be traffic officers anymore. We had this guy retired here and this guy retired here, and you're going to fill those spots, and we're not going to hire new positions, we're just going to attrition allow that. I don't know that it necessarily will pay for itself dollar for dollar, but what I know is that we're here as a service to the community, and the community is saying, it seems like we've got traffic problems. And we don't have enough police to address the traffic problems, because we have domestic problems and drug problems and other things. And so I would like to try to see if we could devote some police officers just to the traffic problems. It will maybe increase our quality of life, improve it, and we can do a cost analysis. And you can come back here next year and Chief Baskin can tell us, or you can tell us, or Summer can tell us, you know, the increase in tickets was this much, but our wrecks went down this much, and our complaints are going down, or whatever the case may be. I would like to take a look at it.
One, one last point I want to make on that subject and move on. If you create two additional traffic officer, those two traffic officer need two or three more support system within the court system and within the department. So that's how government is so complicated and never pay for itself. But we don't see that right now. But when you bombard the court system with tickets, then someone is going to walk to my office and say, well, we need two more employee in the court system. Or Chief Baskin is going to come and say, I'm, I'm just making.
Why don't we build any new roads then? We already have more roads than we can service and repair, right? So we shouldn't build any more roads, because we can't afford more roads. Now you get more roads when you, when the traffic demands it.
So I think we, you guys both have reached that point. I understand what you're reaching for, I think you've made your point. And I think Masood is, is coming up with some ideas, so.
I like talking to Masood. I mean, I philosophically agree with his, with his limited government.
I'm not trying to turn the subject down, I'm just saying we don't need to keep repeating so far. If you got more.
That's, that's the list of three things I need.
That's it?
I don't, I don't ask for much, and I'm trying to pay for it with the service center. Trying to pay for it with the service center.
You say that?
He wants to say.
No, I've been agreeing with pretty much everything, uh, been brought up by James, Jerry. I don't think you say anything important. But I'm still, I'm still in favor of across-the-board rates, just because of the way life is going down here, everybody, we've got to do with money. And also, I don't know, sometimes those merit rates, I don't want to get into people showing favoritism just for some reason. Some departments, I don't hear about people saying some people doing, are not doing enough in certain departments to deserve a raise. But if you still got that department entity within the city, they deserve a raise, so that's all I have.
Anything else?
James? I would just say, God bless Masood Abraham, we're lucky to have him, I agree with you, thank you, sir. It's an honor to know you.
Jerry, you had something else?
Well, I think the city council, our, our rollback rate is 7.009, and our tax rate, this budget, is 6.990. I don't even know what, I don't know if you call that, we're a middle off or we're very close. The rollback rate. Pardon? We're very close, yeah. And personally, I think the city council should consider reducing the tax rate by at least a penny. I think most of our citizens are grateful for up 10%. I don't think most of our citizens, I don't think got a 10% raise this year, at least homeowners. Departmental owners are just going to pass it on rent, so it kind of affects everybody across the board. And I think we should consider doing that. And I love the pay-as-you-go, pay-as-you-go philosophy that we have. And I understand that if one cent represents, for example, $200,000, you're better to spend $200,000 on infrastructure today, because you can't buy as much infrastructure next year or the following year, if you defer that. But still, I think we should consider, I think the citizens would appreciate at least some debate, some consideration of lowering our tax rate a penny or two pennies for this, for this year.
I, I kind of agree with that, because while we're, we're doing well with the increase we see in the sales tax, we're getting more money there, and all the citizens are having to pay more in their property tax just because of the appraisal rate. You know, it'd be nice to say, well, you got all this money, and therefore it all, all go back to the citizens. But what we pay on, on roads, as an example, to get a three-block area redone or whatever it costs, the amount of money that we spent last year is not as much as we have to spend this year for that same cost. So we're seeing a cost increase and everything. But I agree with Jerry, I think, you know, a rate cut by about 1% in the tax rate, it gets back to the citizens that, hey, you guys are having to pay this, we're seeing the benefit of the growth of the city. And I think it would be a good idea to be able to cut it like one, at least one cent. Say, you know, whether we take it out of that or whether we take it out of some other aspect. So I agree with James on that, and we'll have that up as, as an item to discuss. Anybody else want to comment?
I, when I had done a little bit of, back in the napkin, calculating, I, I thought that with taking the service center out, we could do, we could do a one cent, which would get us 175 and leave 225 for one traffic division and to increase our employees, not necessarily salaries, but the, the bonuses or the longevity pay. And I didn't know exactly how much that would cost or what the thought on council would be to do that. But I, I think that 400,000 is there to give us some flexibility without having to dip into the street budget. And, but, you know, the service center might be really important. I just feel like our, our citizens would probably rather see some tax increase, increase, increase police presence than, than the service center.
I have one other question regarding your health insurance.
Armin, I'd like to stand this, this front.
Oh, okay.
I agree, you know, I, I don't want to get to the point of, of cutting back on, on pay-as-you-go. I think we're doing well, it makes sense. None of us likes to have to pay interest on loans or anything like that. We're having to keep that right now from decisions that were made years ago. And so if we can keep from borrowing more money by way of the pay-as-you-go, I think that's a good plan. And if we take, I'm going to leave it up to Masood to come up with recommendations of where we do that. I mean, it's his job to sit and say, this is where I think the best place would be to take that. If the council said, take one cent or two cent or whatever, whatever we decide, instead of us sitting here and saying, well, take it, take this much out of this one, have this much out of this. We ought to get his input of where that money had to come from.
Well, I, I mean, I do want his input, but I think it's ultimately the council's decision on what priorities of our community are. And Masood certainly can give us feedback on, on how important this is to the organization or that. But we're the ones that are elected to say, you know, to set the budget. He has to present this one, but.
I agree. I mean, I'm not saying that we don't say, no, we don't agree with that. But let's give him the opportunity to come back to the council and say, if you want to cut it by one cent, this is what I would take it out of. And we can say, no, take it out here, or we can say, yeah, we agree with that.
When you were talking about the pay-as-you-go, are you saying, well, explain to me what?
The pay-as-you-go, up for the fire truck.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't, I want to take money away from that so that we can
Right.
do something else. I want to keep the, the pay-as-you-go on these kinds of efforts and the increases and fixing our roads, because we're all facing those, those wonderful little tunnels, you know, they're only that big.
But, okay, yeah, so, yeah, I wasn't saying that we should borrow money for the service center.
No, I'm saying we should defer it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
So are we about to hear Masood's opinion on the 1% decrease?
Yeah.
All right, I want to hear that.
Well, again, in my opinion, let me, let me say, let me say that, and I said that before, is in your budget book. In 2022, God willing, this council or future council can cut the property tax by 12 cents. This is just four years down the road, 12 cents. As far as with all due respect to Mayor Drilling and Councilmember Ranson, what we have on our plate, in my opinion, cutting one cent property tax is good, but is wrong. I would not recommend it. However, like Councilmember Money said, you, you're going to vote on the final budget, that's your job and that's your authority. If you decide to vote on lowering the property tax, there are two areas that I would look at, rather than wait two weeks from today, I can tell you. One is general fund balance. Right now, we are keeping 20% fund balance. And if you take 175,000, you reduce that by, from 20% becomes 19.3%. That's one option. The other option is, again, you have 1.8 million dollars in your street budget. This city 10 years ago had zero for the street budget. You can take it from that, if you, if that's, if that's your prerogative. Let me make one last point, that once your budget is approved, we're going to embark selling $15 million water utility revenue bond. Has nothing to do with property tax. The 20% is very important, because while the street is going to look at that and give you a discount rate, better rate for your 20 years water utility revenue. So if you take it from general fund, you might pay for dearly for next 20 years. But if you take it from street improvement, which we have 1.8 million dollars, we might get a good bet and not feel it, or, or we are very fortunate and lucky spending 1.6, 7 million dollars cash on our street. That's, that's pretty good, you know, that's, so that, that's my comment. On, if, if the council decide to lower the property tax, which again, I emphasize, is good, but is wrong. And there is difference between something being good and being wrong.
To get some clarity, are you saying then that you think you would rather see the street budget go down than the service center building go down?
No, no, service center is another issue, but I kind of lowering the prop, because you already cultivated for the 400,000, at least on your own. So I didn't talk about that, I'm just talking about either use your scenario for 400,000 or go with the 400,000. I'm looking at this completely different issue outside the 400,000.
Anything else on that? Jerry, you had one more?
Just one other thing, I think, aren't we opening healthcare cost bids, bids on this Friday, 15th of Friday?
That's a very good point, especially for Mr. Money and you. We are, we opened beds, we got a good beds, and we're going to discuss it with the committee this Friday.
You have opened the beds?
Yes, we did open.
Oh, okay.
No, we opened last Tuesday, and we're going to bring it to the subcommittee this Friday, and, and we're going to bring it, bring it to the city council on 26. It, it is very good bed. We're going to change the insurance carrier to another company, more likely, on the preliminary numbers are. However, when I submitted the budget to you, we were 460,000 negative in health insurance fund balance. We remedied that, and any saving, which is 400,000, 500,000, million dollars, needs to go to our insurance fund balance. Right now, after we remedied the deficit of 460,000, we only have 2,700 in our insurance fund balance, which is not good by any accounting protocol or procedure. So any saving is going to come, rather than we spend it on anything else. I think we need to replenish our insurance fund balance. And, and I said that, I believe at the last meeting, at one point, in glory days, we had 1.6 million dollars in our health insurance fund balance. But a few months ago, when we were putting the budget together, we had a negative of 460,000.
As a chair of that committee, I'm, I'm committed to taking someone to Dallas for. for a medical procedure on Friday morning. I won't be here, so I hope the members of the committee, which I'll label as, and Money, can be willing to reschedule that meeting because I'll contact them this day.
Let's get with Carol afterwards.
Okay.
Anything else on the budget?
All right, let's move to item C, downtown facade design concept. And actually, Brent Hewitt here. And Cedric, did you get a copy of this? We had, this was provided as, as a possible concept for the building directly across from the GMA. And the design concept, it's not something that we have my knowledge and ordinance approving or anything. I know we've, we've had discussions about painting the buildings and putting out different pieces of artwork. What's been proposed here is, and for the audience out there, the top part, which shows the figures and the fingers and, or the feet and stuff like that, that would be metal, pieces of metal that's stationed up there so that it could be taken down and repainted or reconfigured. And in the windows that you see underneath, each window would be a historical event of my understanding of Greenville. And then in the doorway would be a written explanation of what that means. And Barbara Haran would like to do that. She owns a building over there. And she's talking about at least doing the historical stuff, even over on Lee Street where this building kind of makes a horseshoe around. So that, that kind of a concept would be. And that would give us the capability, in my mind, that as people come out of the GMA, or they're getting ready to go into the GMA for an event, it would make an attractive thing. And as far as the artwork in there, the historical stuff, I think it would be interesting for people that, especially when we have the next stroll, but for people that are downtown and they're, they're out there, to be able to walk around and learn a little bit more about the history. And what Ms. Rand has told me is, she's going to set up one of her areas there, kind of as a museum, so that if a business, and I'm not using this as any advanced knowledge, but let's say a cheese store, or bread store, or popcorn store, or something, wanted to come in and take one of those places, she would take that artwork and that right up in the door and place it down in this area that would become more of a historical museum of downtown of what's gone on. So I, in my mind, and Carol, do you have the other pictures that blow up a little bit? I think the next one would, would be a little bigger picture. Slide that a little bit there. Yeah. That'll give you a, a little better picture of it. But she has a plan. I have not seen what she would like to do over on Lee Street, but she has told me that that's what she would like to do in the building across the way. I know this council has had a lot of discussions on concepts of this kind of thing. And I'd like to hear if anybody's got a real problem. I think it'd be good, and, and I'm happy that she's got that interest and is just looking for a general comment.
There are a lot of beautiful buildings in downtown that have a lot of architectural interest. And this is not one of them. So, well, coming out of the GMA, when you see that building, it's just.
One of the ugliest I've seen.
It's just, yeah, it's just flat and, and blah. And I, I think, I think this is bigger for, and I love the history stuff.
I think it will be nice, and it's, you know, it's not anything that we're going to vote on. I just, you know, if somebody's got a real problem with it, you know, now's a good time to speak of it, but. I told her I thought it was.
I like the plan, but I think it raises a larger issue, and that is just the so-called artwork, artwork that's been placed around downtown. Recently, there was an image, something that was placed near one of our historic buildings, the landmark. And I just, I still think, I was working on that before I had my knee surgery, and I still think the city needs some standards for what is, what should be, some standard for approving what goes downtown and away of art. And I like to, I like, I think the appearance committee should work on that with, with Daniel and try to come up with some recommendation to the council. We, we subject people, if you look at what happened to the Gibsons when they were trying to build a building out there. We, they had an architect, we went through several different iterations of that to make it to some standards. We talked about Jim Satterwhite's color of his home. And why should we not provide some guidance and some, some approval process, citizens who approve what is okay to go, go downtown? So I'd like to, I'd like to do that.
I thought we might as well hand it to place a committee that took care of all this on the city.
Not that I know of.
No, what you're talking about is the downtown committee. Would they, they have been involved in various art projects that have gone in, including the one that Jerry's talking about. But they only do that because they are, at the same time, doling out public money for the facade grants. There isn't another committee that looks at everything that's going to happen to buildings downtown and gives a thumbs up or down.
I'd like to echo everything Dr. Ranson said. I've got a lot of calls this week, and they've all been negative.
About this?
About this? No, about this. I'm talking about, I'm talking about another event that took place that people are saying would be better between the library and the splash pad. It would be very appropriate out there. But again, we have some historic buildings. Mr. Money said, and Dr. Ranson said, we've got some historic buildings. A landmark, still a post office to me. Remember buying stamps up there, and savings bond stamps? It's very historic. I get in there and you get, there's a lot of history there. And there's things I think that are appropriate around historic building like that, and things I personally, against personal taste, is my opinion. My opinion is, I would not have put something next to it that was not historically complimentary of the building.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, it is 5:55, and we'll adjourn the work session. Greg, you need, how long?
10 minutes, maybe.
5 minutes?
4 minutes?
I still need to get those questions answered from back there. I need time to.
Let's go. Let's go ahead and take a break and try and get back here. Six o'clock start.
The way to save you money or make you money. If we can't save you $300 on any of your insurance, we'll give you $30. We have been in Greenville for almost 30 years at 9801 Wesley Street. Our phone number is 903-274-4949. And web address is AllStateFriendlyInsurance.com. Give my folks a call, see if we can save you 300 on any of your insurance, or we'll give you $30 at 903-274-4949. God bless. Lone Star Pawn and Bargain Center, 6509 I-30 on the Frontage Road in Greenville. Your one-stop shop for TVs, electronics, computers, and gaming systems. Lone Star Pawn offers a giant selection of hunting, fishing, outdoor gear, and firearms. We have the best prices on diamonds, gold, and jewelry. We've got everything from lawn and garden equipment to job site tools and musical instruments. So for the best deals and pawn rates in town, come see us on the south side of the Frontage Road in Greenville.